Colorado says it's five o'clock here, at least any rate. And I want to welcome everybody back to the customary use of beaches committee. And appreciate the fact that it looks like we have more than a quorum. We have everybody present, 100% of the committee members present. We have some members of the public present as well. Today is February the 6th. It is five o'clock. We do have more than a quorum. We have 100%. If y'all will join me in the pledge of allegiance to the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and consider it a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve the minutes from both January 23rd and 30th, it looks like. Has everybody had a chance to review these minutes?
I submitted a small change to the January 30th minutes today, so I'm not sure if that's already been received.
Okay, what it was?
It was just making sure that the amendment that Mike allowed with regard to the reports.
I printed this one.
Is that?
According to the motion, each individual member may submit a report. The committee may submit a report. That was basically.
Yeah.
That's what I submitted.
Okay.
But I don't know.
That's a motion. Well, that's okay to... Which minutes was that?
That was to the 30th.
It was recent with your amendment.
It was recent.
That doesn't mean everybody saw it, but it was recent.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the minutes as amended.
Okay. Which one is that? We have two sets.
The one that we have, both sets, from the 23rd and the 30th.
Okay. There's second to that, and that's just both sets of minutes is okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye please. Any opposed? No. All right, the minutes are adopted for January 23rd and 30th as well. Today, I've been talking with Rob some about a subject for our discussion at this meeting. First thing I'll ask the committee, does anybody have a pressing desire about a particular discussion that you would like to get into at this time? If not, let me suggest what I have been hearing over the last two or three meetings that we've here. I've been hearing some from the public as well as from this committee, some people who suggest that some landowners would not be opposed to certain kinds of uses on their sandy beach. And I was wondering if it's any value to this committee to try to explore what the uses of the beaches have been since the 1970s until now. And also, what, if anything, the county has been doing or should be responsible to do as far as the beaches are going, like nourishment and replenishment, et cetera, stuff like You know, I don't know whether we're going to reach consensus on anything, but I think this is kind of a core issue in the whole thing, is the kind of uses is one core issue. And it may be something that we can get our teeth into better than some of the more ancillary things in the ordinance. But it's up to y'all. But I want to say this, even if we don't, as a committee, reach a consensus, unanimous or consensus, adopt any recommendations as a committee, I appreciate, and I hope the public does, the fact that y'all have shown up for every one of these meetings. The public has joined us in trying to honestly work some sort of solution out to avoid impending legal actions regarding this ordinance. And at least it shows good faith, I think, on part of this community that we are trying to work out something. And I appreciate y'all's time and efforts in this whole thing. So if you, unless you have some other pressing desire that you would like to bring up that would preempt this concept of looking at the uses of the beaches and whether or not we can reach a consensus on nothing more than these are how the beaches have been used since the 70s or, and whether or not the county has any responsibility for the beaches. Yep.
How would this discussion be different than the beach activity ordinance? Because, I mean, is this, are we, does this committee then going to be reviewing the beach activities ordinance? Because when you talk about uses, it seems to me the uses and the activities are covered under the ordinance number two, I believe it's 2016-24. I believe that is it. And so, are we going to then be reviewing that ordinance?
No, no, no. I was simply recommending that we look at paragraph four of this ordinance, which specifies in here what the activities, what the customary activities, what they find them to be. I would not recommend that we get into the beach activities ordinance. That's not, we have not been charged with looking into that as such and making recommendations on that. The beach activities ordinance is certainly going to affect the way the beaches are used, but I think we need to confine our thinking as much as we can to this ordinance here.
Doesn't this ordinance relate to the conflict between what the county would like to use the beaches for and what the private owners would like to use the beaches for? Isn't that what customary use is?
Yeah.
So can we sort of go along the lines of finding out how the county and the private owners can share the beach?
Yeah, that's kind of what we're driving at.
Okay. Then I think that's a legitimate discussion.
At least that's my understanding of what I'm suggesting that we look at.
Mr. Chairman.
And we got to ask Rob to assist us in this, okay?
I think you're absolutely correct in that number four and number five clearly talk about what's prohibited and what's not and what's allowed in activities. So I think you're right on point.
Again, housekeeping, remind everybody I should... Let's try to state our names, you know, for at least the first go around and then where we go from there. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, my fault too. I was sitting there to... Thank you, I didn't get myself included. But at any rate, I thought we'd let Rob do his good job of helping us see, and this is going to be just open discussion time. If we ever get to a point of somebody crystallizing enough a proposal, then we can, you know, you can make a proposal, see if we get a second, and then we can vote on it if you want to do that. But right now, we're open mic, open discussion.
I'd like to speak right away. Mic start event. I think it's a great idea that we talk about the customary uses, I think on both sides of it. Clearly, this list doesn't, isn't all-inclusive of the things that people have traditionally done, and it doesn't speak to the owners that are concerned about beachfront properties and the things that they're used to doing. So I think there's room to discuss there. I'm sure that they're concerned about being able to do all the things that they've traditionally done in front of their homes. So I think that is definitely worth discussing and should be in there somehow. But, you know, I can look at that list and think of several things that I personally do that aren't on the list and have done for a long time. I go out and do astro photography in the middle of the night. I'll sit out there for a few hours with my camera trained to the sky, and it's not on the list. But I'm sure that there's other things like that that aren't on there. So I think we could probably talk about the many things that we like to do on the beach. I'm guessing that we'll get to a point where we realize that it's really hard to make a list because we each have our own individual interests and uses, but it probably won't be comprehensive and cover everything that people do. People do stuff that I haven't even thought of yet.
Mr. Chairman, I just, at the last meeting, the question was asked, I believe, more than once by members of the committee about trying to define what the problem is. Is it your intention that that be part of this discussion?
Yeah, sure. Let me say this, the committee, we may agree on certain uses that should be in this ordinance and that we think that landowners and everybody else could agree on. And it may be that one or two or three people who purport to own down to high tide say, "I don't want anything, and I don't want anybody on my beach, and I'm going to file a lawsuit." And they have a right to do that. So we may never do any, we may not prevent that sort of thing from happening. But I've heard from members of this committee and from members of the public suggestions that maybe there's certain activities that everybody could agree upon as being so benign as to be acceptable by landowners and acceptable to the public in general.
Brenda Reese, contrary to that, so abominable, whether it be like going to the bathroom and drinking, like is alcohol perhaps maybe something that the public maybe should not be allowed to do in front of a private home, or certainly not go to the bathroom? You know, because that's what kind of follows alcohol and the drinking parties is, then there's no bathroom nearby. So again, that's something, that's the converse side of what not to do, to me.
I agree, but let me suggest this, that when you say in front of the private ownerships, as a practical matter, I don't know how the public's going to know what is private and what is not private. Governor Mike suggested, in fact, he has given us a long dissertation on his...
Give you a shorter one now.
Sure.
I comply with a two-page rule.
And I don't want to misstate your proposition, but part of it requires that landowners voluntarily come up with these kinds of things and promulgate their prohibitions as they can. You know, it's a constitutional requirement of all laws, whatever they may be, that they be properly promulgated. I think your concept, you know, having read it, I understand what the concept is. I only suggest that as a practical matter, if you have 50 or 60 or 900 different landowners out there trying to promulgate their own rules and regulate, I don't know how that would work, okay? But at any event, whatever someone comes up with, including this ordinance, it's got to be properly promulgated to the public so that they have a clear understanding and what will constitute that is another whole issue of constitutional law, but we won't get into that right now. But at any event, you know, I'm, this is just, we're just looking for some possible consensus on a critical subject, I think, as to whether or not, since 1970, the beaches have been used in certain ways, and if so, what were those certain ways? And can they be reduced to uses that would be acceptable to the public and to the landowners? And I, it's your ball, guys. I'm not making this decision just...
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, what I sent to everybody is not in any way intended to indicate that it was postmarked Mount Sinai and was not delivered on two tablets of stone. It's a starting place rather than a finishing point. And from a practical matter, I think you may be right. It may be very difficult to have everybody write his or her own rules. So it may be that there would be some common ground that would be the rules. If you wanted to participate, you could. If you didn't, you didn't have to. I think that was the proposal, was that property owners would have their right to determine whether they wish to participate. My guess is that many, if not most, probably would, provided that the uses were reasonable and that they had some control over their own land. If they didn't have control over their own land, then we can talk all day, but this is going to go to court because what the county at that point is doing, it's a taking. And so when the deed clearly spells out where the line is, if it didn't, then you'd have a whole different issue. But I think that really becomes, you know, the question mark. I don't know, I mean, I know there are probably some landowners out of 900, they don't want anyone near their place. Even those can't keep people from traversing across the wet sand. Nobody that I've ever heard said that that's an issue. That's, we shouldn't even put that on the table because we all recognize that everybody, regardless of who they are, has an absolute right to traverse back and forth across the beach, to fish, to do the things. But once they're into that area that is deeded and surveyed, then I think the landowner has some fundamental rights to say, "We can't have 300 people out here." You know, or you can't bring a tent and set it up, especially an LSU tent. There's some things that are just obscene on their face that we need to protect from, forgive me to all the Louisiana people.
I have a grandson at LSU.
Lost a friend.
Well, the way I read the beach share is that it takes away the customary use right of the public. Because then the owner says, "You can't come on my property and use it as set forth in paragraph four and five here." And so, again, you're going to break everything up, and it takes away the customary right use.
Well, but that...
And customary use is something, I mean, I've read all about it in the last year, and it is not a taking. It's very clearly been stated that it's not a taking. It's the property, and I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat what has been stated previously in meetings, but the customary use is a different, it applies to the beachfront, the sandy portion of the beach, because the bundle of rights of that property owner are different than property owners anywhere else. And it's, it's something that has been explored in many, several states, and I think exactly, what your beach share does is, it is exactly what caused, in my opinion, the county to have to pass a customary use ordinance, because people were being kicked off the beach where they had used for generations, you know? And so I think it would just be saying, okay, it's okay to be selective. And customary use, I think, is so important because at some point in time, every beachfront property owner could say, "I don't want to participate." And I guarantee, at some point in time in Walton County, that would happen. And then we have completely lost our use, our customary use of the beach. And I think that that's something that I don't want to see at all.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Governor, do you mind if I... Sure, please. The, I have also spent a lot of time reading about customary use and having a lot of conversation with a lot of other people who have been spending a lot of time reading about customary use, including several of which who are attorneys. And you all heard my disclaimer, obviously, my employer is involved in one of the complaints against Walton County. And the reason I mention it at this moment in time is that the substance of why Rosemary Beach filed a complaint is that we agree as well that customary use is a concept that should be determined by review of the facts and the history of what has occurred in a particular beach. What we disagree with strongly is that the local board of county commissioners can simply adopt customary use through ordinance. We believe that process is properly reviewed and carried out by the courts. So the process that we've been talking about right now is remarkably similar to what we understand the courts would probably go through to determine whether or not customary use exists on any particular parcel of the property here in Walton County.
And that may be begging the question. Let me clarify one thing. I, and I agree to a certain extent, in the ordinance here, they talk about, they, how do they put it? I'm going to be exact about the public. The drive is hereby protected. I would, I would, and one of my recommendations will be, it's recognized and protected. Because I think what the county should be doing, if they haven't done it in this ordinance, and I think they should be recognizing customary use, not creating it, they should be recognizing it, and that should be made clear. Also, in this paragraph four, in the way they name specifically quite a few things that can be done. And then they get down and they say, "And similar traditional recreational activities." That ain't going to fly, guys. That's unconstitutional, and it's not going to fly. I've had courts tell me things were unconstitutional. I didn't believe it, but at any rate, so what? But that's big, and that's the recommendation I'm going to make in those two small areas. So the county attorney might just make notes, okay?
I'm making notes.
But at any rate, that's just my comment. The county has already adopted this ordinance, you know, they have, Celeste, they have gone through what they think is the correct procedure for determining these things, and they have made a pronouncement that these customary uses exist. Now, whether they do, whether that's accurate or not, we're not going to decide as a committee. A court's going to decide, you know?
Well, it seems like this, one of the charges of this committee was to see if there was some consensus as to not have to go to court.
That's exactly what...
But then I'm hearing from this gentleman that the only way it can be decided is in court.
Well, maybe.
You know, so what are we doing?
Mr. Chairman, to answer Celeste's point, the fact that customary use was uniformly declared on the entirety of the beach without any property owners having an opportunity to determine whether their property should have been declared, and the county was the one that arbitrarily set a 15-foot line from the toe of the dune, that's arbitrary. Where did the 15 feet come from?
I don't know, I think the 15 feet should be...
Should it be 30 feet? But shouldn't it be what is deeded to the property owner? Isn't that the more logical point? Nobody argues that in front of the mean-high waterline that that's public. Everybody gets that. But when the county begins to arbitrarily determine a specific number of feet from the toe of the dune, which as property owners, we're expected to maintain, to try to protect, we all want to protect the pristine nature of the beach, then does the county assume full responsibility and liability should someone be injured? Those are questions that are not addressed by this, and I thought that that's one of the things that we would perhaps at least bring up. To David's point, I think it's in litigation and will be because there's a lot of ambiguity about the application of it. Again, I go back to my point. I don't think most beach owners get a lot of heartburn that somebody's out there sitting in a chair and having a reasonable, I frankly find it refreshing that people are having a good time, and I see little toddlers out there playing, I think that's just terrific. But when people bring huge boom boxes or they're smoking marijuana down on the beach or leaving all kinds of trash or taking my stuff from the walk down, yeah, I got a problem with that. And I think not just beach owners would have a problem with that, I think every citizen in Walton County would be offended by the abuse of the beach, not the abuse of my property. I know no one gives a royal rip about what happens to my stuff, but I know that people in Walton County care about the beach being trashed, dogs defecating all over the place that aren't licensed or leashed. None of us are, I think, cavalier about that.
But everything, everything he's mentioned is in the beach activities ordinance, it is prohibited in the beach activities ordinance.
But not enforced.
And I, well, then enforcement's the problem. But, you know, I think one of the recommendations I'll be making is that 15-foot buffer be moved to the beach activities ordinance. And I think that was, you know, something that was arbitrarily maybe designated, because typically, when you look at customary use legislation or rulings, it is from the toe of the dune or the permanent vegetation line to the water. So, you know, maybe that's what that, this ordinance needs to read, and then the 15-foot is a buffer is addressed not only for the property owners, I think there's an environmental reason to have a 15-foot buffer in the beach activities.
Why 15? Why not 30?
Right.
Why not 40? But there's no priority given to the property owner. I think that's what bothers me about it. And I'm not on the beach, by any means. But I think a property owner should have, I don't know what you want to call it, first right of refusal? In other words, if Mike wants to go down to the beach with his family, and there's three families down there already, that infringes upon Mike's right to go down and use his property or his beach. He should have, I think, a beach owner should have priority in the use of their own beach. And then the other, rest of the public is sort of a secondary thing. But I don't think a beach owner can go down and say, "If I'm not using the beach, you can't be there either. But if I'm using the beach, it's my beach, I need to use it." And I think in developments like you have, you know, that's going to have to take priority because you can't have that influx of concentration of people.
Let me get at least one.
I'm right along with him. I think what I'm hearing, I know what I'm hearing here is it's all coming down to property owners' rights. And like Governor Huckabee said, you can't take those away. You can't change deeds. Deeds have been put in place by attorneys. And his idea in this, I hope y'all read his beach proposal for sharing, and it's fabulous, and it's my thought exactly. Instead of spending millions and millions and millions, you've got three lawsuits right now. Once the 900-plus owners up and down the 26 miles of beach, not everybody even probably knows what's going on with this, it was put into effect so fast, you're going to have more lawsuits and more lawsuits. Do we really want to tie this up for the next, I don't know how many years, with... Do we really want to tie this up for the next, I don't know how many years with just unending millions? Take that money, buy more public beach access, beach prop, beach land, buy more land, open up the state parks, there's a fee now to get into the state parks. If you take away the fee, more people will use them.
Yes.
My name is Kimmy Mims. When you, all of y'all purchased this property on the beach, you knew you shared it with the public. You, all of y'all were more than aware of this. And so who knows where that property line starts and ends and begins? But I feel like this, with all due respect, is going to say, well, uh, yeah, you can come on the beach, uh, if you give me $200. You know, I mean, there, it's, it's just endless or you can't come on my beach. And you shared the beach, you knew this, everybody knew this when they purchased that property that they shared it with the public.
Actually, to correct that, when people bought their property, they bought it knowing that they had the property ownership to the mean high water line. Walton County suggested that we go and get surveys. Many of us spent hundreds of dollars in order to survey so that we would know where that mean water, high wa, that mean high water line was. So when you say, we don't know where the property is, actually we do, it's in the survey. We paid handsomely. And so that is a, an actual, it's not just a golly, wherever I want it to be. It is a fixed point of the property that determines at what point the private ownership ends and the public area of the beach begins. That was done because Walton County said they couldn't enforce it if they didn't know where the lines were. They suggested we go, spend the money, we did. And then Walton County said, well, forget that, we're going to make a 15-foot mark. So that's why there's a little sensitivity about the arbitrary 15 feet is because Walton County has provided some very confusing directions to property owners about what they could and couldn't do and what wouldn't, wouldn't be considered beach property.
Brenda next, Brenda.
Real simple, I would probably just go back to the customary use, getting rid of the vague and arbitrary language. And then importantly, I had mentioned it several weeks ago and one person also talked about it, that earlier it was government lands and what was government land was public in perpetuity. That is, I think, a real important phrase. And so talking about in the last, you know, since the 70s or whatever, even during the last hurricanes of 2004 and '05, as far as who's sand is it there? I saw a lot of county trucks getting the wet sand and pushing it up, you know, under those houses and into those dunes. So again, that's just, if we're going, they're going to go back and look at those sort of details. But to me, just, they keep, I'm going to recommend to the county that they keep customary use as clear as they can and unencumbered by a lot of specifics and that it not be vague and arbitrary and that it looked on the history of it, of course, being government lands and, and use of the public in perpetuity.
Well, I appreciate some of this discussion about the 15 feet. There's another part that, that I've been aware of before using the beaches and that was when, when there wasn't 15 feet. So I think, you know, there, if we're, if the 15-foot were to stay, there might be another statement that says, or half the distance between the water line and the dune or habitable structure. Because there's been lots of times where I've been surfing along the beach and the water was lapping against a seawall, especially since we have a lot of seawalls now that were illegally placed after the storm season in, what, 2005, I believe. That is something that's going to happen more and more often as, as sea level rises and as storm events happen. We may have water lapping up against walls and then where is it that the people are allowed to, to be? So if you, if you go 15 feet from that, they might be in eight feet of water or something. So I, I don't know what exactly the solution, but there might also be a line about, something about sharing that space between wherever the water is today and, and that.
Ken?
Yeah.
One of the things that I think is, is concerning to property owners in general is, I, I know there's a desire to separate activities from the customary use principle. And I, you know, I, I can see where, where that comes in on the one hand, but on the other hand, if, if all the governance is taken away from the property owners, which is effectively what this proposes to do, then if everything is in the beach activities ordinance, that can be changed literally at any time. And so there's no guarantee, let, let's use an example. I think we, most of us when we purchased, probably had people that walked on the beach and they didn't always confine their walking to the, the wet sand, you know, they walked their dogs, you know, various places on the dry sand. I know in my particular area that we have fishermen that come and stick their little poles in the ground and catch fish. We have people, there was a lady the other day threw her towel down and was doing her morning exercises there. To me, those are things that if I had to define what I consider to be customary use in the, since the 70s that I've seen in my particular area, I would concede that there's been people that have done that. That kind of stuff doesn't bother me. What does bother me is people that now believe that customary use can mean they can set up tents all across the front of your property, they can set up chairs and umbrellas, I'm not saying vendors, I'm talking about just public, they can set up umbrellas and chairs all across the property. It's not that minimal use that once existed along all these beaches. To your point, Mike, I'll bet you surf and you bring your surfboard down there.
Absolutely.
And people have kayaks and they bring their kayaks and they go kayaking, they come back in, they park the kayak just there. But you know, those people aren't staying all day. They're not taking up your whole beachfront by setting up campground. You wouldn't believe in the summer, how many people show up at the beach? And I live in a quiet section of beach with Celeste and Vouch for. You know, people come and they will set up stuff, all this stuff at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, then they disappear for two or three hours and they may come back at 10 or 11 or whatever, and they hang out a while and do their thing and then they disappear again, sometimes till sunset and they'll finally show up, watch the sunset and then take away their entire campground. To me, and it's just my perspective, I can't speak for every beachfront owner out there, that's what's caused this problem.
I've noticed, that's a change that's happened.
That's what's caused the problem.
I noticed that change as well. I think it, to me, it seems like it coincided with changes in the, the chairs and the way that they were regulating those. All of a sudden, the, the chair folks and the general population were buying for space so they get down there at, you know, early hours and put their stuff out and then maybe come back at 2:00 PM and use it. That did become a problem recently. I've noticed that.
You call it rush, we, we call it rush to the beach.
Rush to the beach, yeah.
And reserve.
So it ends up using or, you know, occupying space on the beach that otherwise could have been open for people.
Precisely.
But that, that is something that has happened recently.
Wait, just, just a moment first and then you, Lisa, one, okay?
I'd like to verify what Lisa is saying. I mean, when we're there, we have to get out at 7, 7:30 in the morning to take our own beach chairs out to even have a space in our own property. And then there's just masses of like 10, 12 people and they bring big ice chests with beer, with liquor, with whatever, and I mean, that's just what they expect to do. And they do not respect the fact that you own the property. I mean, I can testify that I asked a, a man from Texas who had brought a.
Now, now.
This Tarlo, supposed to be Texas, parked illegally, came out, sat this close to me and my grandchild. I asked him kindly if he minded moving down a little bit, that our family was there for the weekend. He walked by with my six-year-old grandchild in my lap and he says, in my prior life, I was a Navy SEAL and I killed people for a living.
That was a what?
And I was a Navy SEAL and I killed people for a living.
Well, you can imagine what the six-year-old thought and how our whole weekend was ruined. I mean, what do you say to that? We had not worried about locking doors that night, we locked doors. I mean, that's the kind of thing that's happening, people. And, and nobody, nobody in our neighborhood minds people walking the beach and doing what everybody has done. I mean, that's not the point. But there's a whole lot of difference in paying the taxes you pay, taking your life savings to buy this property and then not being able to, to even have it for yourself. I mean, literally. So, you know, we can talk about kicking people off, but it, it works both ways. I mean, what do we get for that property? What do we get for the taxes we pay?
Okay, what?
I think every landowner has the right with their deeded property, they have the right to post a sign, private property, and the public should respect that. Again, open up the state parks, get, find a way to more public beaches so all of those groups can go and enjoy, they can set up at 7 o'clock and they're not ruining anybody's private property. My house in Dallas, I'm deeded the side, the front and back, and I don't let a little T-ball team come on my front yard and play T-ball. It's, it's the same thing. Private landowners owned to the mean high tide and they cannot be taking those rights away.
Well, I, I want to address something that really kind of, I, I want to say that about a year ago, there were several things that happened that I think caused the county to feel like they needed to write this. And one of them was the fact that in a lot of neighborhoods, and it'd been happening over maybe the last 10 years or so, that the beach had been public and with everyone thought it was public and then all of a sudden, all these quiet titles and some other legal actions came along that all of a sudden, you know, that land that had been public beach was sort of claimed through, through the courts. And, you know, that's one of the things that I think has kind of brought this thing to a head. And again, of course, I agree, I've seen the people down there at the beach and like they come and bring three tents and everything. That is something that I think, again, has been taken care of. It's not, it's mentioned in the customary use ordinance and the beach activity ordinance, getting rid of the huge tents so that people can't come down and like set up and, and take over a, a spot. And all of these things, again, I think we keep getting into beach activities, but that's what, what are the, the beachfront property owners don't want. But what I'm hearing and maybe I'm, in this, in this hearing is that y'all just don't want any people on your beach, the beachfront property owner. That's not.
Not, that is not what we have said so well.
Everyone has said that's not the case.
That is not the case and we have not said that. What, what do you, what do you expect? What do you say is the difference between a public beach and a beach that is owned by a, a person? I mean, what's, what to you as a public beach?
Okay, customary use defines that all of the beach can be used, all of the dry sandy portion of the beach can be used by the public. It's not owned by them, but it can be used by them, you know? And I'd like to.
So why do we have public beaches? Can I ask you that?
Because the public owns beaches and I'll tell you what, the, in, in, as far as the state parks are concerned, that is so that we don't have buildings all over it. We actually have, in Walton County is so blessed to have beaches that are actually, look like they did over 100 years ago because they're not all completely built out. And the park, the, the county pays or the TDC pays, I think, up to $25,000 for people to get into Topsail Hill Park for free during the summer. And so that's up for the, you know, anyone can do it and it's really not that expensive to get into the parks. But people, people have the right to choose whether they want to go to the park or go somewhere else. And, you know, the, the county does own, the, the, the public, now they're buying them, so they're, they're putting in facilities for people, because again, y'all don't have facilities for people, but there are. But people have the right, the public, the tourists have the right to choose if they want to go to a county park, the public park, or if they're renting or live in a neighborhood, walk down and use a beach, whether it's privately or publicly owned. If it is privately owned, they have the right to use it.
But then it's really not privately owned.
Within.
I mean, what, what's the point of private ownership? Would the county like to refund the taxes that we're paying? Because I don't know if you'd look, but it's enormous. And if there's no benefit to the extraordinarily high taxes, we could impoverish Walton County just simply say, everybody can use every inch of that beach, but to do so, refund in the taxes because we're not, at that point, controlling land that we're paying for.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, but some, and I don't know this for a fact, but I, my understanding is that beachfront property, as y'all know, but you don't pay for like the square footage, you pay for linear feet on the beach. Is that correct? Someone tell me that and I'm not.
But the property values are so much higher.
Well, you know what, maybe your property values will drop if customary use goes into a fat.
Do we want that?
I don't know, that seems to be the problem here.
That's what we're scared of happening.
Lisa.
But if you want to, you want to ruin the economic engine.
Lisa Two's up.
Of Walton County, you put the word out that we're kicking people off the beach, you know? And that did happen.
All right, Lisa Two's here.
There's no question that there are a few anomalies out there where somebody has taken, you know, real big liberties about kicking people off the beach. Nobody's going to deny that.
But there's a couple of things I want to mention since you brought them up a few times. I, I know more about, I, I know more about these activities that, that we're talking about with claiming land, the judge giving people land. I would love for everybody here to recognize that in these cases where there was so-called public beach and it's been turned so-called private, it was always, it was always private beach to start with, it just was not recognized because of appropriate record keeping or inappropriate record keeping. Judges don't give public land to private homeowners. They don't do that. It's, it's all, all of these kind of things are based on facts and evidence, most of which is in, in the, the courts already. It's in the public records that are maintained by Walton County. So let's, let's put that aside, even though I realize that that was probably one of the things that sort of started this. But somewhere along the way, we have to recognize that you're, one of the basic premises you're saying is the public won't have use, okay? So there's the word use. The, the whole concept is called customary use. So again, we've got the word use. How can you have something you're arguing to have customary use and you need to be able to use it and yet you're, you want to say that we, everything we talk about is part of the beach activities ordinance? It's, what does use mean then if it's not the activities that people want to do on the beach? And personally, I'd like to know, don't, put aside the few people that truly have chased people off their beach, okay? Put those aside for a few minutes because they're very minimal. I want to know what it is that people want to do on the beach that they cannot do now? Because I know for sure, the only thing I've ever asked anybody on the beachfront in front of me not to do is kicking balls and frisbees and things in the dunes where then they're up running all over the dunes. That is the sole thing I've ever asked people not to do. Now, I'm not saying there aren't other things I would, but what do you want to do that you aren't able to do now?
Uh, here's the thing, I think Walton County is looking at this in a, and I've said this before, I think, they're looking at this in a forward manner. They're saying, you know what, we've got people that are, you know, kicking people off the beach and not allowing them to use it. How is that going to continue and continue and continue? And, and I can see at some point down the road, you know, all of the beachfront property owners at one time could potentially say, well, you know, none of us want to share our beach. And, you know, this is Walton County's opportunity. And, you know, this is Walton County's opportunity to, in an ordinance, do the right thing for the, the whole of the county.
My question that I asked a couple of meetings ago, and I was hoping to get an answer to, because it comes to the nature of what problem are we trying to solve? How many specific complaints have been filed of someone being run off the beach? There are nine hundred parcels, twenty-six miles. How many times has there been a problem, uh, that the county is aware of through sheriff reports? I mean, how, because I think if, if we're trying to solve a problem, because there were three incidents last year, over twenty-six miles during fifty-two weeks, how many millions of dollars is that worth in court for us to resolve? Is it, is it, is it urgent? Because most of us who are property owners have acknowledged, we don't have a problem with people coming. I, I kind of enjoy watching a guy fish because I might see what he's catching, and I might even go down and talk him out of a couple of fish before it's over. I just don't see that the, I, I mean, I know of a couple of instances, one was in the paper, and, you know, I'm aware of one or two, but can, could you answer that from the county's perspective?
I'll try my best to.
Okay.
So, after our meeting last week, whenever you addressed your concern wanting to know some numbers about people who, um, I guess, called to complain that they were asked to leave a particular beach, I called the sheriff's office and I called TDC to see if I could get some sort of report. As you might suspect, people usually don't call to say, "I've been asked to leave a beach." They usually call to report a trespass. So, I can get you the information for trespasses, but it would be for all of South Walton. We can't locate it on the beach itself. Um, but I can get you that information. It's a lot, a large, voluminous document. Um, and the TDC just simply doesn't track it because it's not involved with their day-to-day business. They're solely focused on issuing citations. So, really, the only evidence that the county, Walton County BCC had in its possession would be anecdotal. But a big part of this, um, and I encourage all of you guys, if you weren't present at the March sixteenth, two thousand sixteen workshop, a lot of it came about after that workshop, where, uh, many people, there were hundreds of people there, and they expressed some of the concerns. There were private property owners there expressing concerns, but also members of the public expressed their concerns about being asked to leave the beach, or signs on the beach, fences on the beach, other obstructions keeping them from using the beach. So, if you guys haven't watched it, or if you weren't present at the workshop, I encourage you to do that because that might give you an idea of where a lot of these complaints were coming from. And I'm happy to get you all the information on the trespasses, but unfortunately, the way the sheriff keeps his records, it's going to be everything south of the bay.
Mike, Mike, um, I guess two specific instances that I can say on Eastern Lake that I can report happened. One, I wasn't at home, I was out of town. The other, I was in town, is that there was a Gulffront property owner that put up a sign at a, on the beach, and it's a sandy beach, it's not a developed beach access, but it's a thirty-three-foot wide road and access that goes all the way to the outfall, and had put up a sign, "Private Property, No Trespassing," sign there. Uh, and that Commissioner Meadows' office, I understand, was contacted about that, and the sign was removed. Uh, I can say, well, that house was under renovation or whatever. The workers there were just one really nice couple, both of them are doctors, took their two little kids, were walking down that way that we walk as a neighborhood access. This is down, uh, like I said, it's a thirty-three-foot wide road that goes all the way to the water, and they were harassed by the workers to not come through there. So, those kind of things are going, perhaps that wasn't reported, we just knew that in the neighborhood, that the workers there, per the homeowner or the building contractor, was trying to tell people to stay away. So, those things are happening out there. Yeah, and then another person was just sitting in their chair, actually in that, right away in the, maybe that homeowner, uh, that, you know, that's, came, came up and told them to leave. So, those, and that wasn't reported anywhere. So, those kind of things are happening. Uh, but on the other hand, like, I say, for like the tents, I, back to, it should be in beach activities, if you have a tent down there, you should, if you leave it for more than an hour to say, walk from Eastern Lake to Deer Lake and back, it takes about an hour to walk there back, then you need to lower that, shouldn't have a tent, but that umbrella, because I live on the lake and I overlook the lake and the beach and the outfall. And at any moment, a thunderstorm can come up, and then those umbrellas and chairs become flying projectiles, they go in the Gulf, they go in the lake, they almost impales, you know, someone, I guess one of those made the news. So, that's, it is an issue, and I do see them block, my view, I can't see the beach for six months of the year because of the tents and chairs and things that are coming left up, and then people leave. And then, if it's a really bad storm, people have enough, we were too poor to have anything like that, or tents, and they leave them. They leave them on the beach then to be never picked up. So, anyway, there had, there are instances.
I, I, you know, it seems to me that a lot of what's going on here is fear. I mean, it's just plain and simple fear. You know, the, the public is fearful that they'll no longer have access to the beach. The private property owners are fearful that what, what property rights they give up by saying, "You know what? We're okay if you walk on the beach, if you fish from the shore, if you have a lightweight chair, a small umbrella." I'm, I'm using examples of things that I recall, uh, a towel or a blanket on the beach, but no tents, no heavy-duty setups of things that start taking up, you know, tens of feet. And what, what, what property owners are, are fearful of, and I think you can all understand this too, is it may start with very simple things that, that nobody really objects to. But what happens then when the activities ordinance comes down the road, and all of a sudden, because there's this broad stroke put on twenty-six beaches, or twenty-six miles of beach, and there's no governance whatsoever for the private property owner, all of a sudden, they have whatever the county decides is appropriate for, for, to be used customarily on the beach. And that's a fear. That's a genuine fear for people, just like it's a genuine fear for the public that they may not get to use the beach. So, there have got to be some things we can do as reasonable people, and most of you out there are just like we are, you want to come, help come up with solutions. We just, why don't we start working on, can we all agree, I mean, we all agree that you can walk on the wet sand, right? I mean, that's a given. Can, can we all agree with some of these things that are listed in four? I don't like the beach umbrella that's ten feet, because to me, you get rid of tents, okay, you're saying you can only have a tent that's six by six by six, which by the way is what the beach activities ordinance is proposing. But then you turn around and say, "Oh, but you can have four umbrellas that are ten feet wide." That just defeated the purpose of reducing the tent sizes. And the, the, the whole object behind the, the objective behind the tent sizes being reduced to six by six by six was the argument that little kids, babies, or perhaps elderly folks need shade. Well, if you're not, and, and this may sound callous, I apologize if it does, I had six babies that I brought to this beach regularly. You put suntan lotion on them, and you take them down to the beach for a while, and then you bring them back, you know, you take them back home, because babies and people that are ultra-sensitive to the sun really don't need to be on the beach for eight and ten and twelve hours. And that's what people are doing now. And they don't even recognize that the white sand under that tent and all around them is still casting all that sun on them. They're still going to get sunburned if they're not doing all the appropriate things. But, but those are kind of things. I think we can come up with some ideas that we can all live with without a customary use ordinance, because I think it already, to the extent there's customary use, I think people get to do it, except on those few rare parcels, and we all know, most of us know which ones they are, where there's, the owners have gotten ultra-protective because they've been told that if they do not protect their private property rights, they will lose them. I mean, it's, that's been said over and over and over to people.
Well, I think we need to have the customary use so that when people are, are now coming in and, and, and buying their property, they understand it because apparently there was some misunderstanding when the property was purchased, um, previously, that it, you know, that there, that people couldn't use it, the public couldn't use it. And it does get back to, I think, the beach activity, we need a customary use ordinance and then the beach activities, and I think what's going to happen, uh, is not that the beach activity ordinance is going to get broader and more inclusive of activities. I see it, as more and more people come here, it's likely to get narrower and narrower, which that's how things are going to have to change. You know, because, uh, and you probably know, there was people who used to ride horses on the beach, they did, um, you know, drove cars up and down. Van Ness will tell you how he used to ride the Des Moines Beach. And, you know, all of those things, we can't do those anymore. And what I see is, as more, people are going to keep coming here, unless we completely stop development, which is a whole nother issue, but we need to, uh, make sure that the rules are understood, and I guess that's, that's part of it, and the enforcement. But I'd say, I've been on the beach and called the sheriff, and they were there like that. I, 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 you know, so I've only had to do it once, but, uh, it was, they were there. So, if you've got an issue, I think where they need to spend money on, if they've got to, if they've got to litigate customary use because people don't want it, well, that so be it. But I think they also need to have the enforcement, and, um, you know, if, if, if there's something happening on your beach that you don't feel like is allowed under this, the beach activity, well, call the sheriff, you know? And, and again, I've had good experience.
Question though, Celeste, if you call the sheriff, and he says, "We don't know whether that land is yours or whether it's the public's."
But I'm not talking about, I'm talking about if he's doing an activity, not if he's just sitting there with a beach towel that's allowed.
No, no, we're talking about, I, I'm specifically referencing something that I think by anybody's standard would be inappropriate. Underage people drinking, underage people smoking marijuana, people sunbathing nude, uh, people having unleashed unlicensed dogs that are defecating on the beach. Um, I, I don't think any of us argue that that's an inappropriate abuse of what ought to be a pristine and carefully maintained beach. But if the result is that we're told that the sheriff doesn't know whether that is on private or, or public land, it was, I just want to remind you, the county told private owners to get a survey so that then they would know whether they could enforce it or not on a trespassing issue.
But everything that you've just mentioned, I've seen, I hadn't, I didn't call on it, but last spring break, I was standing on my walk-up, and I saw there was a bunch of young kids, and I believe they were drinking beer, and, um, they all got up except for about two of them. They saw the sheriff, they got up, and sure enough, the sheriff stopped, he questioned the guy, the, the kid, and he put him in the back of his truck. No, I don't know that anybody called, but I think he was just doing his regular patrol. I have seen the, um, sheriff's office tell people to, you know, your dog doesn't have a leash on it, and tell them to get off the beach. I've seen him give tickets to people, um, because the beach where I go is known for having people, like, they go down there and take the dog off the leash. So, it, that is the enforcement issue. It doesn't matter who owns the beach, because what, the instances that I witnessed, it didn't matter who owned the beach, they were, um, violating the beach activities ordinance, and the sheriff did what he, you know, what he's supposed to do, you know? So, um, I don't, I don't see where the issue is whether you own the property or not, if you're violating the law, you know?
So, what are your suggestions on reserving the beach? Rush to the beach and reserve on the beach? What would your, what would your suggestions be to remedy that?
I always think there might be a line in there similar to the, as long as it says not calculated to interfere with the exercise and right of the public to enjoy, that maybe there's some, maybe there is some provision to make sure that, uh, the, the private, uh, beachfront owners can use that as what you're speaking to. But if there was a line, something like that specifying, as long as they're not trying to prevent people from using it, um, we'd make sure that you have that spot.
Well, and, and, you know, we have some people, um, anywhere there's an access, basically, they're the first lot or two that's nearest those accesses. I, I don't happen to be one of them, but I've seen this happen all the time. Those people are inundated, literally inundated with people. Instead of people, I, I've always wondered why they don't just kind of look around and go, "Well, gee, there's five or six hundred feet of beach that way, and five or six hundred feet of beach that way. We could spread out." But, you know, part of that, again, is they bring everything but the kitchen sink, and they don't want to carry it. So, they park as close as they can get. And so, I, this is, this is the real problem with the whole customary use concept. To me, it's not people being able to use the beach, it's what does "use the beach" mean? And that's terrifying to those of us who have seen some of this stuff and think, "If I called the sheriff, I know they won't do anything."
I, I think that part about the sheriff is an important part, but with this ordinance in place, with the customary use ordinance in place, I think the sheriff will have, uh, will feel more authority to go ahead and say, "Look, this is, this is the rule, um, you're going to have to comply." I think they've been kind of waiting for us to do this part so that they had more authority to do that. You may find that with this ordinance, they're going to be more receptive and more, uh, more able to do that enforcement that you want.
Uh, again, to answer your question, what could be done? Again, I, I'm for keeping the customary use as clear and clean as possible, that it goes through the, the courts without all these others. And again, I would might put that in the beach activities soon, but, I mean, I would, if I was testifying before a beach activities committee, I might say, "Hey, if you come down and leave your tent for more than an hour," and, again, we need more, uh, supervision down there because it is mayhem, uh, that, that it could be called and, and be hauled off. Because customarily, uh, again, like going home, we had to go in between ten and three because it was hot and play Monopoly as a growing-up type of thing, you know? We just maybe took a towel down because we didn't even want to bring the towel back. We might have had flip-flops, that's it. So, again, all these, this stuff that's come down there, and, and then again, it becomes a problem with those sudden storms and, uh, problems for the beauty of our lakes. So, again, customary use of the, the beaches has been used in perpetuity, uh, and then we have our beach activities. But I think, yeah, I think we could have some more beach activity, and, but we need, like, there's, there's not even a flag at Eastern Lake. Even, we, we need to look out and say, "Hey, dang, it's bad, don't go out," you know? But, uh, there aren't enough lifeguards, there are not enough people of authority. We have these beach ambassadors now, but you don't really have authority. There really needs to be that chair or the, the TDC, some kind of official person or lifeguard or someone that can say, "Hey, uh, call in the beach activities pickup truck and say, 'This tent has been here unoccupied,' or umbrella or whatever, for two hours, come get it."
Yeah, and see, that's not illegal, so they won't do it. I mean, unless we change something. But you, you know, the beach activities ordinance is, I believe, Sidney, am I right, that it's being voted on tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
At tomorrow's meeting? It's, it's, it'll be a done deal if it's voted on at tomorrow's meeting. And I can tell you, it's got the fifteen-foot buffer, and I have voiced this publicly several times, and I'll voice it again here. I vehemently object to the fifteen-foot buffer because we are having such a difficult time establishing dunes, you know, with these storms. And contrary to, I don't know where you saw any sand pushed up, that should not have happened at all in the last storm.
I have videos and pictures. I was, I stayed for those hurricanes, and I have videos.
Well, I can tell you, that didn't happen in my area. And so, the beachfront owners in our area have spent time, money, resources to make sure that we do everything we know how to rebuild the dunes, to protect the turtles, et cetera. And this is what's going to happen. Today, I have some vegetation outside of my permanent vegetation line. It's not a lot, it's little patches of sea oats here and there. Well, as soon as there's a fifteen-foot buffer, that's where all the trucks are going to drive. And guess what's going to happen to those new little sea oats? They're going to get trampled to death. And so, it's limiting our ability to actually restore turtle habitat, restore our dunes, things like that, that we, again, as beachfront owners, tend to get persecuted for, you know, if we're not doing things to make sure, and fish and wildlife really doesn't like it if we're not.
And if I was in charge of the world, I would get a lot of those trucks off the beach.
You and me both.
I, I would have them in many cases. Some of it's impractical, it's not practicable, I should say, that's the term.
Right.
But a lot of places, it would be where all the beach vendor chairs could be up on the road by the X. A lot of those, like, near me, there is, it's a sixty-six-foot wide road, and maybe it's fif, five hundred feet to the beach. 500 feet to the beach, there's no reason for those big boxes to be on the beach, they should be up on the road.
But can you understand?
And a lot, picking up the trash, a lot of times, the trash cans should be, in some cases, maybe not in all of them, and get, get the trucks from not driving across the outfalls, get those trucks, and let the sheriff and the enforcers sneak up on them from the access way or the roadway, I don't know.
Sidney needs to tell the.
I'm sorry, just real quick, Judge McGee, I did want to let everybody know because it was a common concern at this meeting and the previous meeting. I asked Brian Kellenberger, I'm sorry, I asked Brian Kellenberger, the director of the beach operations, to give us a report on the new code enforcement officers that they're going to have. They're, they've more than doubled the number and also added beach ambassadors. So I asked him to draft a report, and he should have that for you guys at our next meeting. I just want to give you that update.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, you, you know, you kind of got into some of the activities that I had asked about, you know, what if anything should the county be expected to do for the beaches, you know, including private ownerships, et cetera, et cetera? And there, thank you, I'm sorry, including private ownership, et cetera, et cetera. And I think there are a number of things that they probably already do, you know, that I've jotted down, turtles and the cleanup and the sea oats, planting of the sea oats and the refurbishing and the beaches when, when, not if, but when, the weather's going to take them away. It's, it's just the nature of the situation we have here. The beach safety thing is also something that the county, in the sense of the fire department in conjunction with the TDC and other private entities, we're trying to, I happen to be, in full disclosure, a member of, of the South Walton Fire Department, Fire District Board. We're trying to continue to make arrangements with private entities to expand the beach safety activities on the beach. And that's been an ongoing process for a number of years since we had Black Sunday here a few years back. But anyway, that's just some other concepts that I, that I want to throw out here. This is an interesting discussion. There are a lot of things that come up. For example, I would observe that, I think you're absolutely right, you know, wherever there's a beach walkover, people, especially in the summertime, because I live on one, and they're not going to be more than 200 yards either way because they just won't do it, they won't walk that, any further than that. That, that creates congestion. I'm not sure that the customary use ordinance can cover that kind of specific activity, but I think we ought to continue to try to look and see if we can get any consensus on what are the, the most moderate things that everybody could agree on, the public and beach owners could agree on, and also agree on what, if anything, we as public and private property owners could expect the county to provide in the way of beach activities or reclamation. I don't want to use the word activities because it's, that word, it's getting over you, overworked. So I'm, you know, what, what is the county's responsibility with regard to the beaches of South Walton County, such as renourishing it and looking out for turtles and cleaning up and nourishing? So I don't know if we could kind of come back and see if we can get any consensus. We've got about 10 minutes to do this, what the hell? You know?
Could Rob make a list for us again, maybe, that we define what customary use ends up meaning?
Okay.
And do you want to start with the activities that are referenced in the ordinance itself under paragraph four?
It suits me.
All right. And, and what I would suggest in there is...
I would suggest, the only thing, Rob, I didn't mean to interrupt, but in, in that similar traditional recreation, that's got to go, that ain't going to do it.
But, so what we're talking about in the ordinance are recreational uses only, right?
Right.
We're not talking about illegal activities. We're not talking about activities that are in violation of 216-24, the activities ordinance. We're just talking about recreational activities. So let's, I mean, is there a consensus? Everybody agree to that? That's what the, the ordinance was designed for? Mike?
I mean, a shorter method might be to say, "Not otherwise restricted by the, by the beach activities ordinance."
To...
You wouldn't have to name anything if you said, "As long as it's not restricted."
You know, the problem is, there are so many guests. We rent our house out. There are so many people, tourists, that come here. They don't have a clue, they don't have a clue what the beach activities ordinance is. They don't know what they're able to do, what they're not able to do. It, it, that's the difficult part.
And Lisa, that was one of the things that I was talking about in promulgating. You know, if this ordinance passes and it gets through, the county's going to have a responsibility to properly promulgate that. And that, in my mind, is going to take a lot of promulgating, you know? Because the little signs that the walkovers ain't going to do it, to put it in my mind.
Well, and you can't expect...
What you're going to have to do is, you're going to have to get with the, the property, the bed tax owners and have information like that disseminated to the visitors, you know? And we can promulgate it to the local people with the local newspapers, et cetera, et cetera. But you're absolutely right, that is a problem that has to be addressed, and I'm not sure that it has to be addressed in the body of this ordinance, but it's, in, in order to be constitutional and effective, that is going to have to be addressed.
Hey, Tom, one thing I, I see that everyone here pretty well knows that our TDC has, brings in $20 million about a year in bed tax revenues, and, and unfortunately, they spend most of it on advertising. There would be no reason that they could spend that money and put advertisements that people watch, whether it's on Facebook or YouTube or buy on the entertainment channel that comes, pops up on people's TVs or, and buy ads on the local media, whether it's radio, TV, you know? Because there's, instead of spending that $20 million in Atlanta and Dallas, spend it, a lot of it here informing people of, of what they're doing. And it's working very well, like Panama City, which has, like, say, the no alcohol on the beach ordinance for spring break. Well, they advertise that on, on TV, so they, and a lot of people don't know where they are around here, so that might help us out, you know, peripherally. But again, we've got $20 million a year in TDC funds, and a lot of it has to go toward advertising. Well, perhaps that could be a way of piercing the void, I don't know.
Well, it, it seems like sooner or later, the, the residents who live here are going to understand what they can and cannot do, because we, you know, they know that, but they still, they still let dogs run on, on without leashes, but, you know? But I think some of these things, and it doesn't have to be 22 pages, but I think you can condense some of the do's and don'ts for visitors or renters, and just like in a rental agreement, there's a lot of things that, you know, you've got before you sign that, "I'm not going to bring a dog into this house, I'm not going to do this or that." Have some of these things where, you know, you cannot bring a tent to the beach, you know, so people know that when they're renting the property. Because I'll be honest, you look around, you know, if you go to Alabama, everybody in Creations got a jet ski. Nobody ruins a jet ski here because they know they can't really utilize it. So I, and I think the, the, as the more some of these sort of do's and don'ts in the back of the beach activities ordinance get known, same people come back here time and time again, you know?
David got the floor.
I, I don't mean to distract us from the effort of talking about the individual activities, but I, I have had a lot of conversation in the past two months with folks who manage or operate beach services for some of what I'll call the resort communities, Seaside, Rosemary, Watercolor, Alice, Sandestine, those types of places. And it, those represent probably a total, I would imagine, several of the 26 miles, certainly not the majority. But in terms of individual owners, we're talking about a few dozen owners of the common property owned by these communities that represent a pretty substantial portion of, of the beaches. And just practically reading through, if, if, if nothing stops the ordinance from being implemented, as Walton County has adopted it, April 1st, all of these folks responsible for these communities are going to wake up and wonder if our rush to the beach, to use a term that's been used, where on behalf, I'll describe Rosemary's numbers, of 550 or so property owners, we have about 2,700, 2,800, depending on what tide is and what time of year it is, feet of beach, that works out to about five feet per house, so it's not a significant amount of beach. We put out, on a typical summer day, we put out about 500 sets, and that's why we have multiple rows, is that we're trying to accommodate 500-plus houses on, on that amount of beach. The, the language in here in chapter 23 is adopted in the meaningful portion of it, which is section two, starts off in paragraph one and says that, "Except as stated in paragraph three, no individual group or entity shall impede or interfere with the right of the public at large, including residents and visitors of the county to utilize the dry sandy areas of the beach that are owned by private entities for recreational purposes." So I don't know yet, no one's told me, Walton County hasn't told us, whether or not putting out 500 sets of beach chairs will impede, will impede or interfere with the public's right to access that sandy beach. It's a good, good question. So the next thing that happens is I go to paragraph three to learn more about what this except as stated in paragraph three says. And it says that there's a 15-foot buffer zone, that in Rosemary's case, that Rosemary has some control over. Well, chapter 22 says that we can't set any chairs within 15 feet of the toe of the dune. So that 15 feet's worthless because the county's going to drive, pick up trucks up and down it, right up against the toe of the dune, which our share of Lisa's concern about that. That's been going on for a long time, practically speaking. 12 feet is the, is the dimension that we leave clear for vehicle access today and have for many years. So I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen on April 1st. I don't know if the sheriff will be putting my beach staff in handcuffs for impeding the public use of the beach. But I hear that there's going to be a lot more code enforcement, perhaps be thinking about that. And then I, I continue to read through this section. Again, these five paragraphs are really, the whereas's are not, and this is an attorney explained to me, the way this is written, the whereas's don't, don't have meaningful application. All that matters is section two, those five paragraphs, and then the penalties section behind it. So the rest of the, of section two goes on to say what the public can do. So I'm left in the dark, along with all the other resort managers and beach service operations, to know what it is that I'm going to be able to deliver to the thousands of homeowners that have, for many, many years, had chairs waiting for them when they come down on the beach. And again, it's, I just, we can talk about what the different things are, but the bottom line is that the way this ordinance is written, again, I've said before, because it has not gone through the rigor of the courts, the way customary use has been addressed in all other areas of the country we're aware of, it, it is simply a couple pages of paper that are being thrown out there on relatively short notice for the private property owners to, to wonder what's going to happen. And, and again, I am being absolutely sincere when I say, as an individual, one of the reasons I moved to this area is because of the wonderful public access that exists in places. I choose to use the, the state parks on a regular basis with my family. I, one of the reasons I love the state parks, as, as Celeste mentioned, is they're free of buildings. I don't have to worry about who's upland and looking over the top or whether they're offended by surfboards or kayaks or whatever else we have to be carrying with us at that time. I, I still am, I cannot wrap my head around what problem it is that chapter 23 was adopted to solve, because it has created an enormous problem that is rapidly approaching, and that is that the economic engine of Walton County, as best I can tell, has got a serious, serious obstacle in front of it if something doesn't change by April 1st. And I'm not going to have to participate in the conversation about the different uses and whether a blanket or a towel or the size of an umbrella. It is, I, I just cannot, I cannot express how big a problem this ordinance is written is for the, a significant number of miles of Walton County's beach.
And that's where private property like that ought to really have, they just have to have governments over, you know, they're controlling, controlling for a lot of people.
But I don't see where this, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, I don't see where in this section two, it says you can't put out umbrellas and chairs, the only thing, in fact, it states that you can put out an umbrella.
It says that the general public, and I'm, Mr. Chairman, sorry for addressing her incorrectly, but, Celeste, it says what the public can do, and it says what the property owner cannot do.
Yeah.
That's what it says.
But as the property, if the property owner is a part of the public, then he can do what the public can do.
You still have all the same rights as the public.
Yeah, it's not like he's, you know, excluded.
Those are not... Okay. So I'm aware of an owner that approached me and asked me if Rosemary Beach would put beach chairs on their beach, because we have the staff to do it. We can throw down hundreds and hundreds of chairs, we're not going to do it, we operate within the confines of Rosemary Beach. But if that's the case, the upland owners are going to, where there's going to be games being played, chairs are going to go out, and the tents, well, the owners could hire people to put tents out, and this is going to be ridiculous.
But isn't there some stipulation?
What is the problem you're trying to solve?
There's some stipulation.
We have to answer that question.
Preserving customary use is, is the main problem.
Yeah. I think we're off the topic.
Yep.
I think so. I understand where you're coming from. This is what the piece of paper says to me.
No, no, no. Let me, let me try to put succinctly what the county has done. The county has simply recognized that the beaches of South Walton are subject to customary use as defined by the courts in Florida. And that's what they're attempting to do here. Now, you may agree or disagree with even the concept of customary use, but it's what they're going on is, correct me if I'm wrong, Sidney, yeah, they're going on a Florida Supreme Court case primarily outlining what customary uses are. And those cases say that, incidentally, if you own property on the beach, you own it subject to customary use, that the customary use is not a servitude, it's not an easement, it's a thing that's completely different, and it's based on doctrine that goes back for many years to the Old English law. And that's simply all that Walton County is doing now. They're saying, "We're recognizing customary use as defined by the, by the courts in Florida," and they're attempting to delineate what it is. Now, you may agree, disagree, and when the courts are going to tell us pretty quick. Yeah, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, according to David's point and others, that the customary use has truly been a doctrine, but it has been applied by the judicial branch, not the legislative branch.
That's correct.
And in this case, Walton County Board of Commissioners is not a judicial body, it's a legislative body.
That's correct.
So the question is, under what authority does the Walton County Commission, a legislative body, have making a judicial decision?
Well, that's why I said that they need to correct the language in here and say they recognize, they're simply recognizing the doctrine and apply...
But is it also correct that in customary use application, each parcel has to be identified for customary use based on history and based on testimony and evidence? You cannot blanket say everything in the entire state is customary.
There's some case, there's some case law that talks about, you have to look at parcel by parcel, identify what parcels mean, you know? When I was looking into this thing, I was doing it mile by mile. I figured that that was a parcel, you know? Anyway, so all of that's going to come up in the case as to whether or not that was done. The county has taken the position that based on the evidence, on the testimony, correct me if I'm wrong, Sidney, on the testimony that they've had, that they feel confident that all of the beaches of South Walton have been proven to be subject to customary use. Now, that may, you know, that, they did another... Now, that may, you know, that, they did another wrinkle in here with this 15 feet. I mean, if I were on there, I wouldn't have gotten into 15 feet. I would have just gone with the old definitions, but that's, we're going to have to see. You know, I would hope, you know, that we could do something here that could avoid litigation, you know? But, you know, and hell, I was in that business for half my life. You know? I used to have a saying, when somebody would talk about, we may have to go to court, and I said, well, let's get down like Betty Brown, the game ain't hard and you ain't barred. You know? But, that's, and that's not true. We all tried, even most of us tried to avoid litigation. That's what we're trying to do here today, and that's, it's trying to do whatever we can.
And it would appear that maybe this installation is not ripe. It hasn't been thoroughly vetted, and it's likely now that it's already been implemented, that there's no other alternative other than litigation. The reason I even brought up the proposal I made was, is there a way that we can sort of apply the wisdom of Isaiah?
Right.
Come let us reason together.
Yeah.
Is there an option other than going through what is going to be very expensive for taxpayers, very expensive for landowners? Rob, no offense, or to the judge, but the only winners in an extended litigation are the attorneys.
That's right.
Everybody else ultimately loses, even if you win the case, you've lost sometimes friendships, relationships. I don't think any of us want Walton County to be a place where there's a divisive and confrontational attitude. We'd love this place, we wouldn't have chosen to be here, we want it to be the best it can be. It grieves me that we're already three lawsuits and probably some more that are likely to come.
Yeah.
And I'd love to see us avoid them.
Well, I would too, and I would agree with you on that. That's why I was trying to get to the kernel of the issue, the uses, you know, that if we could recommend to the county, we can't do it, if we could recommend something to the county that landowners and the public could agree on as being the minimal uses, and then also take a look at what the county should be expected to do apropos the beaches. So, let me tell you, we're running out of time tonight on this, but we're going to, we've got to, we're just going to have to go into a business meeting right now. Y'all are going to have to tell me, when do we want to meet again? I would like to keep this subject on the agenda and let y'all think about it, and, you know, even get home and write down some ideas that you may have, and see if we can come up and try to devote at least the next session, because we're running out of February. We're running out of Februaries, and we have got to make a decision as to whether or not we're just going to do individual reports, or whether or not we can come to some sort of consensus of agreement and report it on March 1st, by March 1st, okay? So, tell me when the next meeting is, and they place in time, and...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
At the last meeting, there was some discussion of trying to meet on a Saturday, and it appeared that the intention of that was to try to get some more time, so that two hours goes by pretty quickly in these discussions. Could we perhaps consider meeting on a Monday, but starting the meeting at 3:00, and then doing a break in?
Unfortunately, the law says we have to start it at 5:00.
No, 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 we can start, we can start right now.
We started at 3:00?
We had two hours and then break for a while.
Did we get absolution somewhere?
Yes, for me.
Dispensation?
No, it's because you guys are just making recommendations, and we'd be seeing we have no issue with the timing, so you guys can hold workshops during the day.
All right, well, David is making the suggestion, and I'm told by counsel, that we can start it on earlier if y'all want to do this.
Just my personal, I teach school on Mondays, I might roll in a little late, because you promised not to vote on anything until I got here.
We can start at 4:00. I don't want to exclude anybody. I'm just trying to, I would be for it. I just don't want to be excluded.
Okay.
And then, what time is it? Another, Mr.?
Probably, I'd be here probably at 4:00.
Mr. Chairman, is the Saturday meeting that was brought up, is that totally off the table now?
Is that as far as that concern goes?
And one option I guess I would throw out, this room isn't used very often during Fridays during the day, and that's a day that's usually pretty free for county staff. So, if you guys wanted to consider a Friday, that might be a good idea.
I would love to just sit down and get this done.
That's, that was the spirit of my suggestion, is to get a meaningful amount of time.
Longer meeting, longer meeting, let's just, let's get it done.
But Lisa, by what do you mean, get, what, decide on the uses?
Decide on whether we're going to do an individual report
All right.
to the county commissioners, or whether we want to appoint a person that's going to write all this out, and then we put our suggestions collectively in that body of work.
We can do like the Supreme Court, have a majority, a majority opinion, a minority opinion, and one person writes it, but it's the cumulative.
Well, my thought was that if we, if it looks like we cannot meet, beat any sort of consensus here on a subject matter, just everybody do an individual recommendation, you know, to the county commissioners, in writing, not to exceed 500 words.
Do you think that's as effective as one detailed work, body, saying this is what we all can do?
I think so. I don't know how, I don't know how, I'm not smart enough to collate it. I know, I'm not, okay. I don't think I could do that.
Thomas Jefferson and John Adams served it.
The last time we were here, we talked about the 18th, Saturday, the 18th, is that off the table?
No, it's not off the table, whatever y'all want.
I would prefer weekday though. I'd prefer weekday, and I can come on at 4:00, 3:00, whatever, on a weekday.
A lot of the people that doesn't live here, it's all for them, you know, to travel.
I work full-time. And I've been driving back 12 hours from Dallas.
Good Lord.
Good Lord, he's got to, he's got to get me home tomorrow.
Yeah.
Saturday would be wonderful.
Again, I reiterate, I appreciate this committee's efforts at trying to come up with some solutions here, and I appreciate the public's input, too. But anyway, let's get us a date that we got to meet next, that's the...
Well, Monday's the next 13th, and the 20th, the following Monday, is President's Day, so I don't know what, but it seems to me that we voted on those individual statements, and I think that's where we're going to end up. It's wonderful to keep having these great discussions and informations, but I think we could probably just, I think we're, probably all of us pretty close...
You want to take one more shot at this 13th?
Yeah, and then I think we probably should be able, I would think we might be able to wrap it up.
I disagree. I think we should work until the deadline, unless we come up with something before that. I think that's what they charged us with. I mean, and I'm out of town, and I have to make a real effort to get here, but that's how I feel about it.
Okay.
I hope we can come up with something, because, you know, one thing that's discounted by, in this discussion, is what happens if the court rules on one or more of these cases and throws out customary use, says you can't, that is a judicial finding, and Walton County cannot do that? Then, if that happens, we don't even have benefit of having tried to work out something here that we could all live with. And I think we can work out something that we can all live with. I think there's enough things that have been shared. It just means that there's some minimizing, as opposed to, you know, the idea that the public can just use the dry sand any way they want to, that's not really legal.
Well, that was, my rationale in throwing out the subject matter at this time was to see if we could do something like that, if we could come to a consensus on minimal uses that would satisfy everybody and expectations of county. Okay? And so, anyhow, what date? Next Monday? Same time, same place?
13th, well, why don't we try for 4:00 on the 13th?
4:00, okay.
That would give us an extra hour.
We're in the intention of going an extra hour.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So, we can do like 4:00 to 8:00, is that what you're saying?
Is there any way we could do a Saturday? Do the next meeting or we're not going to?
Okay.
Prefer, but I can't make, I know Governor Huckabee's out.
I'll be out, out of the country for the next couple of weeks, but you can't build it around one of our schedules, I get that, so.
All right, so what is the consensus of the, okay, is there a motion to set a date?
I'll make a motion to set the date for February 13th at 4:00.
Do we have a second to that motion? There's a second, any more discussion about it? All in favor of that February the 13th at 4:00 to 8:00?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, let the record so reflect. We will then reconvene February the 13th, is that when it is? The day before?
Monday, the 13th, 4:00.
At 4:00 to 8:00, okay. Isn't that the day before Valentine, the day after Valentine's Day?
No, the 4th.
The day before. Damn, I better get that straight.
We'll remind you of Valentine's Day the next day.
And I, and I'm sorry if I come off with a little cussing every once in a while. Let me tell you, the only, I was on the bench for 24 years in Louisiana, and the only reprimand I got from the Supreme Court was, they sent me a letter, and they said, Judge, we've noticed that you've used injudicious language from the bench. And I met Pascal Calagara at a cocktail party, he was the chief of the Louisiana Supreme Court at the time, and I said, pass, I said, I got your letter, and you're absolutely right, I was wrong, and I apologize to you and the public, but I said, you should have seen the injudicious SOB I had before me. But at any rate, at this time, I would like to give the public a chance, you heard us up here, can you give us some constructive ideas to go with for the next meeting here? Okay, and we will, again, have the three-minute limitation, if you can. Is that a good spot to address?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
My name's Jackie Markell, and as I sit and I listen to this, and I heard about, actually read Governor Huckabee's proposal, the thing that concerns me is, if we do not establish a general customary use that, as Brenda Reese said, is simple, clear, for public use of the beach, and we have different property owners that choose to come in and out, it is not going to be enforceable. And what one property owner feels or agrees to today, he may sell his house tomorrow, somebody else comes in, they have a whole different feeling about what the public should or shouldn't be allowed to do on the beach. I think that recognizing the doctrine of customary use, we already have that in the state of Florida, we already have that here. And what I, what I would, I said it in the first time I spoke, I would like everybody to keep in mind that this is not just about us and our particular desires for right now as we are the owners and the stewards of this beautiful place called South Walton, but it's for generations in the future. It's for the people in North Walton that come down, you know, drive all the way down here, have to look for a parking space, and they want to use the beach, too. It's for everybody. It's not just what we individually want for our own little slice of the pie, it's for the greater good of this county and future generations, and it's got to be enforceable, it's got to be simple, it's got to be clear, and that's all I'd just like you to consider.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry DiNardo, I've been here 20 years, and in support of what you 20 years ago, we bought a place, and one of the reasons we bought it was because we had the beach. And after listening to this, I think this does belong in the courts. I think you guys have been great, spent a lot of time, and for the future generations, this should be out of our hands. This should be litigated, because everyone has a good argument through their eyes, and for the future generations, let the courts decide this. All the lawyers are going to make money, we understand that, but you're not going to solve this problem. We're not going to solve this problem. This problem's going to be solved in court, and I will be surprised if that's not where it ends up, and I think that's where it belongs.
Thank you, Jerry.
My name is Richard Harrell, and we've lived here in Santa Rosa Beach for 25 years. There is a solution that will be very difficult to implement, and will not completely please During our introductory meeting, the judge asked that we come up with a compromise that would please all sides and avoid high legal expense. I believe that all the objectives can be reached by accepting the order offer of the Army Corps of Engineers to re-nurge the beaches of South Walton. Initially, there may be an objection, as there was originally, by the beachside owners. However, I honestly feel, with customary use almost a fait accompli, their feelings may have changed. Let's consider, in the next minute or so, the advantages of extending our beaches 150 to 200 feet southward from the present waterline, at no cost to the county. The beachside owners can maintain privacy over their present beach, originally, property as originally deeded. It's theirs to keep it. Walton County residents and their guests will have the freedom of a large seaside area where all beach activities can be enjoyed, 150 to 200 feet south of the present waterline. South Walton will be permanently protected by a buffer zone that will be maintained and repaired should damaging erosion occur. The Corps of Engineers has promised to do this for 50 years. Your beach and the land adjacent to it will be protected. The vistas, the vista of the extended beach will enhance and embellish our treasured asset permanently, and high legal expenses will be avoided. In the past, there have been some certain red herrings that have been used to confuse the issue. For one, the Corps has dug six different areas to make sure that the sand selected will be equal to or superior to what we have now. While the nourishment is going on, disturbances will be affected areas for only one day, very rarely more than one. Walkways extending from the end of the walkover to water's edge will further isolate private beaches. A business truism appropriate, apropos to this situation, and used by Henry Clay, was an agreement that is, a good one, is probably dissatisfactory to both sides.
Thank you, Richard. That's been litigated.
Richard Bryan.
Thank you.
If you're going to resolve this in the courts, it seems to me we need to figure out a way not to bankrupt the county in the course of doing this, and not to have individual property owners have to expend a great deal of capital in order to get involved in this. So, maybe we should be thinking about some way of doing this collectively if we're going to go to court, rather than having it individual by individual. I'd also like to make a comment about Rosemary Beach. Your stacked-up chairs are running people from Rosemary Beach over to inlet beach to the public beach. They don't want to go down there and fight the battle, and there's a parade there every day. They don't wanna go down there and fight the battle, and there's a parade every day of, of people that go over there. I bring that up to say that you're really not going to resolve the density problem with customary use or anything else. We're gonna have to take a look at that whole situation in order for us to have the same kind of quality of life that we've had, and it, it just seems important that we be thinking in that direction. Thank you.
I'd like to commend the committee, I think they did a good job with a pretty wide-ranging discussion tonight, excuse me, although I think I'd characterize the results as inconclusive at best. Just a couple of ideas that came that I jotted down as I was thinking. One of the big issues here is, is if you put, if, if the public is allowed to put beach chairs, umbrellas, et cetera, across the front of, of a private property, owner's property, I would call that, and it can very easily deny the private property owner the use of their private property, number one. I mean, I've seen that happen. Just for, for Lisa, on the, on the 30, if, if you have a six-by-six-foot tent, that's 36 square feet, if you have a 10-foot umbrella, that's about 78 square feet. So, there's a big difference there. Remember the old pi R squared, and length times width kinda things. A big issue that was brought up that I think needs to be addressed somewhere along the line is liability. I mean, who is liable on a private property owner's property when something happens that they are liable to be sued over, when they're forced to open that property to the public by the county? I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think that's a big issue that needs to be addressed somewhere along the line. To me, customary use equates to lawsuits. It's the best thing I can do. Customer use equals lawsuits. The chairman talked about life-saving on private beaches, I wonder if that private includes the private property owners that are gonna be subject to customary use and have to open their property to the public. Promulgating was another word that the, the chairman used, and, and I like the idea, I think it was Celeste that said, the TDC should be held responsible. I think every lease ought to require that the person signing the lease knows and understands and acknowledges the fact that they know and understand the rules and regulations that apply to their use of the beaches. And concomitant with that is, is enforcement by the county and, and a fine structure that discourages people from violating the, the codes and ordinances. Customary use appears, from what I hear, or at least from what I know about the county, it appears only to apply to private property, not to the public or state property. And that's just some comments that came to mind as I was listening to the discussions here, but thank you for the efforts you're putting in, and thank you for the discussions that you've had.
Thank you, Bob. Other discussions?
Hi, I'm Kelly Anderson. I wanted to thank the committee for what I think was a really good constructive discussion today. Thank you all for your time. The one thing that I keep hearing over and over again is that there's no problem, and I just wanna share with you a couple of things that have happened to me that make me feel like there is a problem. I know there's bad behavior on the beachgoers' perspective, but there's also bad behavior from property owners and bad behavior from visitors. And one time, I was walking on the beach, on the dry sand, private property, had a trash bag in my hand, I was confronted with husband-and-wife homeowners threatening that they were gonna call the sheriff, which I encouraged them to do, 'cause I thought, well, if I've done a crime, I should probably do the time, and they look like people that would have a lot of cameras around, so I wanted a chance to take a look at the video, but they never actually made good on their threat. The second incident that I experienced myself was, I was filling in a giant hole that someone had left, again, dry sand, private property, and the renter who had rented that house came out screaming and yelling at me, 6:00 in the morning. My kids built that. There was nothing super special about this hole, except for the fact that it was huge. There was no castle, there was no fancy engineering or anything, but that guy came out and started yelling at me for a good 15 minutes while I was filling in that hole. So, there's bad behavior, it's out there, we have to get in front of it before it gets worse. And the last thing I'd like to comment on is, I think you guys have found something that you all have consensus on, 'cause I have not heard anybody advocating for tents.
Advocating for tents.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody's advocating for tents.
Good evening, Mike Geroz, a full-time resident in Sandestin, South Winds Street. Nice to be here again this evening, compliment all of you. It's, it's a challenge, particularly when the county is already initiating to put an ordinance in place, right? So, as many of you indicated, is what's really the objective, when there's an ordinance already out there? And that's why there's lawsuits out there, right? So, I, I think one of the things I wanna say is, and I think it's sometimes lost, and as a property owner who, I invested significant dollars in my property, is I have a deed, it's recorded by the county, it's a clear deed. I have deed to a high tide, dry sand. I should have the right to, I have chairs put out every morning, I pay significant dues every month to have that service completed. I wanna be able to go to those chairs when I wanna go to those chairs as a property owner that has, owns that property, deeded by the county, recorded by the county, and it's only right and just, I think. So, I, I think what the county needs to do is take a hard look at the 900 parcels or so, and really exclude first all the parcels that are privately deeded, and then start there and start looking at customary use where the county has an already-approved development to occur. And they need to start really there, and, and with that, my suggestion is, my recommendation to you, to the county, rescind this order. It needs to be done promptly and justly, and hopefully the board commissioners will act upon that, and I think they'll listen, and you can certainly outline some of the reasons that you talked about, the reason. I mean, there's a lot of discussion here, there's a lot of, it, it will lead to confrontation and more issues, I think, is what's been discussed, and I think it's just the right solution. So, again, thank you so much for your time and efforts, this is time out of your personal days and evenings, and thanks so much for doing that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? We'll take one, this one last comment, and then Rob has some comments to make, okay?
Tiffany Hughes, and I just wanted to make a statement about the, the 15-foot buffer zone. Originally, it was written as 25 feet, and from the last meeting before they voted on the ordinance, apparently, the county went out and surveyed and discovered that there wasn't quite 25 feet of dry sand in certain areas, that it was already eroded, so they changed it to 15 feet in order to accommodate that. So, that's how they said they came up with the number. However, I would say if it's already eroded so much that you don't even have 25 feet, why are you encouraging, you know, more people to go and sit and further erode and go closer to the dunes? But, that's my opinion. Also, as far as the issue of liability, that's another question that I had asked at the original meetings, and the county attorney said that it would change the class, there's, you know, four classes of liability of people on your property, and it changes them from being a trespasser to an uninvited licensee, as far as he was concerned from his research. So, it does actually change the class of person, but I believe that, I'm not an attorney, but it's, it's almost the same responsibility to the people coming on your property as you're not supposed to maliciously hurt them. And then also, one, one other thing is, really, I don't think that the real issue isn't exactly the residents of Walton County, be it beachfront owner or visitors, it seems to be the tourists, and most of these, you know, I know, okay, the economy's based on tourism or whatever, but you have to get people in line at some point, and because of the behavior of tourists, it's causing, you know, people who are residents here to not be able to do normal things on the beach because of all of the bad behavior of, you know, some people. But I don't really know how you would go and implement that, because even if you put, say, rules, rules of the beach in everybody's rental unit, when you sign up for iTunes, do you just click agree that you read the terms of service, or do you sit there and you actually read it? Like, let's be honest, who's gonna take their time to do that? But what you can do is have more presence on the beach and actual enforcement, and that is, the crux of our problem is we don't have enforcement. And just for one little example of non-enforcement, we had some people who decided to set up right in front of our house and set off fireworks recently, and they were going off for about an hour, and, can I finish? Real quick? Thank you. And I, I called the police, 'cause it just was relentless, non-stop, and maybe about 10, 10 to 15 feet in front of our house. The police came and saw it, and went down and spoke with them, and said, well, that was their last ones, and I told them to just move down the beach. I'm new here, and I didn't realize that fireworks are actually illegal, so they told them to just move down the beach for the next time.
Thank you. Rob?
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. In listening to the discussion, I came up with about seven different questions that I'm gonna ask you all to consider until we get together again. Some of them I ask directly to those who favor the private property side. Some of them I'll ask to those who favor the public side, some of them I'll ask to both of you, all right? So, here we go. This is really more for the private property proponents, if you will. We started tonight's meeting with a question of, how can the county and private owners share the beach? And there was consensus that from the mean high-water mark C-word, that's all open. And so, my question is slightly different. Should the county and private owners share the dry sand areas of the beach? We need to answer the should before we can get to the how, and I, like I say, I expressly direct that to those who are on the private property proponent's side. For both sides, are you facing an inevitable collision with erosion? Where you sit today, is it gonna be different in 10 or 15 years? Or five, or 20, or inevitably? For the public side, should the public be able to have unrestricted access to the dry sand areas of the beach? Even to the extent of being able to play frisbee when a private landowner is having a wedding reception for one of their children in the dry sand area? Should the public have access to throw a frisbee in the peach bowl, or the punch bowl there? For the private proponents, should private property owners be able to put up wooden fences on their survey lines? And if wooden fences are allowed, how about chain-link fences? And if chain-link fences are allowed, how about barbed-wire fences? The point that you see is, at some point, perhaps, public rights and private rights, neither are absolute. For both sides, do property owners get economic benefit, unique to them, from Walton County being a popular tourist destination? And if so, does that in any way impact the property taxes that they are required to pay for their beachfront property?
Could you repeat that?
Yes. Do property owners get an economic benefit from Walton County being a popular tourist destination? And if so, should that be taken into consideration when we hear the discussion about the property taxes that they do pay on their property, on their beachfront property? Two more. Is there, for both sides, is there anything different or unique between unlawful activities on privately-owned dry sand areas versus public areas? Is there anything unique or different between unlawful activities on privately-owned dry sand areas versus public areas? If there's not, then you have one series of solutions, but if there is something unique, let's, let's hear that. And then the last question that I have for the group, for both of you, or for, for both sides that I'm hearing, is beach property different from inland property? Is beach property different? Florida has, what, 935 miles of coastline? Are we unique in Florida with beach property, and are the rights that attach to it different from inland property? So, thank you for hearing me out, I, I kinda heard different versions of that throughout the night, I'd ask you to consider those, and Judge, I look forward to seeing you all next week.
Okay, fine, next one. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
So, move for adjourn till next week, 4:00 here. Mr. Harrell.